From the First Baptist Church.
Father in heaven, thank you sir very much for this opportunity to be here today. Thank you God for this county that we live in, Ford County. It's a blessing to be here, God, and all of us who are here, we know that blessing. Thank you so much. Thank you, God, for these leaders who give of their time, such a commitment in everything that they do. I pray, Father, for them today. I ask God that they will seek to hear your voice and seek to listen to your will and seek, Father, to lead according to that. I pray, Father, as a result, your blessing may fall upon all of us who live here and love this place. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Everybody, just shout this out. All right, to start our consent agenda, we have approval of minutes for meeting 2023-2021 and 22. And we have fireworks licenses for one. One for wholesale fireworks enterprises LLC.
Two.
That's two, sorry. One for J.A. Day Fireworks, one for J.A. Day Fireworks, and one for Crazy Bull Fireworks. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
I second it.
Motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have approval of claims for payment. The amount of $3,87,151.33. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
I second it.
Motion in second, any further discussion? We have a little clarification on some of that, please, since it's a large.
The one big number?
Yes.
Yeah, that is for the Kedon, for the Homer project out there.
Right away acquisition, yes. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have open public comment. We'll limit that to five minutes per individual and 15 minutes per topic. By my liking, to be the first until the next kind of commission meeting unless an emergency situation exists. Take or write all. Can't, how are you today?
I'm okay, I'm good.
If you want to just spend a few moments, first appreciation of the meeting we had last week, the administration initially passed it on the Legacy Center. And if you're pleased with further cooperation, the bids are going to be up today. And no matter what happens, the LBD will continue working with the county to make that project successful. Basically, the society has stood before and will continue to say that we will go and pursue tax credits and grants for the project, which will help in the financing of the project. And if you have any questions, it was fine, but otherwise, just thank you again for your help through the years to get to where we are right now.
Thank you.
Sonya, I saw a note, I think an email from you about the notes of that meeting there that we had last week. And I don't know if you've seen it or not, Jenny, maybe you already reached out to him about this, but one of the bullet points on there was about city codes, a list of city codes that need to take care of down there. And I think at our meeting, what we actually meant to ask was if you would compile a list of what city was asking for us rather than the other way around.
Oh, okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, that was the only thing I saw on there that I thought I'd read.
That's why we do that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So for all your time, we appreciate it.
It's one of the purposes of sending it out of his commission.
Thank you very much.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you, sir?
Been up here before. My name's Clay Solder. I'm coming on behalf of Solder Farms and Solder Capital Company today and not on behalf of the City of Buckland. So just got a little bit of paperwork before you're here. Just stick with me while I discuss about it. There's a nice little picture for everyone to see up front. I wanted to discuss the zoning for the wind towers and definitions of major and minor structure in regards to how the setbacks are worded. To keep my time short, I won't read the definitions or the setbacks I did at the zoning meeting. But if you see the picture of this building before you, I would assume that all of us would think that that's considered a minor structure. But when you talk about your definition of major structure, it says added value to land or for use for commercial residential ag use. So there, that being said, if you'll flip to the second page, this is no shot at the county of Breakers at all. But if you look at the highlighted functions, it does say with ag improvements, and then it does say the site has a structure. So I pay property taxes on that. And this is a building that does belong to Solder Farms. I didn't go sign someone else's. For the record, I am pro-wind tower, and I believe that wind towers do have a lot to add to our area, especially in southeastern Ford County, to help with our land values and our school system and everything like that. That being said, when you define the major structure in the setback side of things, it says no turbine shall be located closer than 2,000 feet or four times the total height of the tower from a major structure. Now, if I'm a participating landowner, I can, I can sign a waiver and give that setback change to the height of the tower plus 50 feet. But if I'm a non-participating landowner and I'm anti-wind tower, and we're going to call that a major structure, that's not a dwelling, that's not a home, how are we going to define this? And are we going to leave it up to zoning committee for every individual case? As if I have neighbors, for say, I don't, but I could have a neighbor, for say, that would say, you know, I don't like wind towers, and I have this shed, you're charging me property taxes, it adds value to my land, stay 2,000 feet or four times the height of the tower. So to bring into retrospect what four times the height of the tower or 2,000 feet really are, you'll go to the last page I gave you. And over here, he knows I'm from Buckland, and bear with me, I did graduate from Buckland, so I hope I did my math right. The lady at the zoning meeting last time said the towers can be anywhere from 500 to 600 to 700 feet in life.
Buddy, I don't care who you are.
Okay, so if we do 2,000 feet from the height of the way from the major structure, and we use pi r squared, we're going to affect 288 acres of farm ground, of production for the wind tower companies. If we go four times the height of the tower, and let's say the tip's 600 foot, that's 2,400 feet, and pi r squared affects 415 acres. So now you'll see on my last line, I said if you take 1,000 feet from a dwelling, home or residence, and pi r squared, it's 72 acres in effect. And I do believe that there has to be some compromise for residents that live outside of city limit protection and live in the country, that they get some distance of a wind tower from their home. And I would say 1,000 feet seems to be the precedence in Ford County already. I did not print off what I found, but if you will Google Earth and say Spearville and the wind towers that are up there, and find the tower and measure over, it's within 1,000 feet of the football field, 1,000 feet of the cemetery, and 1,000 feet of several homes out in the country. And my concern is, is I'm pro-wind tower. I don't know necessarily where all the companies stand and where you guys stand. But what I would like to do is have some protection from us as landowners, from absentee landowners, whether they're hunters, or they just live in California or Colorado or New Mexico, and they necessarily aren't pro-wind towers. And they say, you know, for 5,000 bucks, I can go out to radius irrigation and buy a little shed and anchor it down and put a little 20 by 20 pin in there. You're going to charge me property taxes as Ford County because it's added value to the land, and now I'm going to have a leg to stand on as a major structure. And I just kicked out 415 acres. And so my concerns are, is we've got to get the definitions of major and minor correct and the setback distance correct. And what I would like to not do is leave every individual situation up to the zoning. Because I did somewhat get the feeling from the zoning board when I went and spoke from them the time before, that some of the members on the zoning board were not in favor of wind towers. And one of them actually openly just said he didn't think they needed to be around his house. So I feel like we've got to get it in, in the writing correct, so it's not up for a pin. That being said, if you guys have any questions for me? Did I do my math right?
Everybody's all good. I was sitting right up there when that took place.
I remember. You have to.
Thank you, Clay. I know.
And one other thing I would like to say is I don't envy you guys when you have to make decisions like this because you have to, you know, look out for everyone, the homeowner that lives in the country and the landowners. But I would say, you know, there's a lot more acres of land than there is homeowners, especially in rural southeastern Ford County, that this could hurt us big time. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you.
My name is Stephen Powers, and I live four miles south of Menhore's Church. And what Clay said there and the way it's set up, basically, all the ground around me where people live and stuff, and where Sean lives, will be off limits to wind towers. Is what, if you start sitting there and figuring it out, because you take out that 400 some acres he's talking about, it only leaves a 10 acre spot here and a 10 acre spot here, and the fall distance of the tower falls into that circle. Basically, they're taking out just about everything in the area that I live in to have any chance of a wind tower. Now, he didn't mention it, but there's another part in your zoning for the solar and wind towers, setback for solars and stuff, and also for wind tires. In the cities where people are putting up little wind tires to generate in their house, okay? Now they've got to move that. How far? Can you even have those? Plus, on solar pumps, I haven't taken into consideration setback for a solar pump, here it is by your house, pumping water for cattle. And they said we've got to have this reflector deal and setback 300 feet or such a matter from the building and all this and that. You guys are going to be drilling new wells to put in solar pumps to water your cattle. That costs about $1,000 a hole.
I see where you're going with that, Steve. I think those are exempted from the actual definition of commercial type of a system, though. Like, for somebody that has an individual wind tower there, that doesn't fall under the definition of the commercial. And like, I've got several of the solar pumps on my well that's also. And if it doesn't fall under the commercial part of it, they're going to be exempt, they would be exempt under the zoning regulations because they're not defined as a commercial.
Now, that if somebody reads these regulations and you've got a commercial cattle operation, it's a fact.
That'll take, that'll take your definition.
Well, I understand. You and I understand that you get it right, Philadelphia law, you're here.
Check that.
Everybody's going to be in trouble.
We checked to clarify that, but yes, I don't think that falls into the, under that definition.
It doesn't. That's something else on, since you've already let the horse out of a barn up around Spearville on all these other deals, so it's late to close the door, too. I should sort of stay with what you just got there. That's all I got. Any other questions?
Any questions, Steve?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Good afternoon.
All right.
My name's John Buckland. I'm a project developer with Invenergy. You might remember me, I think I was here probably a year and a half ago, looking for approval for mud mats. But yeah, I'm here on behalf of Invenergy to talk through a few other matters with regards to the wind tower and solar wind ordinance. So as you know, Invenergy has been developing and operating energy projects for over 20 years throughout the United States. And we own and operate a few here at Kansas as well. So, and a lot of those counties do have wind and solar ordinances or have not, or we work with them. So there's some experience there that we're just trying to highlight and work through before some of this is moved into the actual regulations. So kind of echoing what had been said before, I have a few specific points I want to discuss today just to make you all aware of, that I think on behalf of Invenergy and some of the landowners I've had conversations with, I do think need to be addressed just to make sure all interests are being taken into account. So the first of those is the inclusion of FAA, of the FAA in the turbine septic regulations as well as in the solar regulations. I think if we understand that they are the, you know, nationwide kind of regulator in that space, and they have expertise, and they've done hundreds of hours of studies and research, I think we can agree that making, or suggesting that we can make a change to include them in the regulations and say something to the effect of, you know, the applicant or the developer shall adhere to their regulations as opposed to what's currently in there, which applies a kind of blanket setback for all types of airports or airstrips, regardless of any of the specific nature of those airports or airstrips. As you know, they could be turf, tarmac, they could have many flights, they could have not so many flights, small planes, big planes, all these things factor. The FAA is able to how their setbacks are determined and what's the appropriate way to address the airport for aviation safety and on our end, proper sighting of wind turbines. So the reason I bring it up is that how it is currently is restricting development for some landowners that are in a portion adjacent to that airport. That the FAA would say, you could, basically, the county is overregulating more than what the FAA would actually regulate. So that's our suggestion there. So if you would take that into account, we would appreciate that. The, the next topic I'd like to discuss is with respect to the collection lines. I'm sure most of you are familiar, but those are the lines that connect each of the turbines for a wind project, similar to a flow line for an oil well. And in the regulations today, we just believe it to be a little bit problematic for all parties. So on the, from the perspective of the county, almost, I don't think it's the intention, but almost every single collection line will not adhere just by default to the regulations because they require, well, that's not that they won't adhere, but will be required to come to the county and request approval for each one. And my understanding is that the intention is to minimize disruption to the soil, the natural features. And I really, from some of the conversations with landowners, it's, I mean, they route their lines from their pivots, and oil companies will put their flow line really aside, and now we have to come and make our design more inefficient and come to the county for approval to make it go back to what we were more reasonably done. So it's just a little bit problematic that we're being required to do something that actually makes the issue the county's trying to resolve worse. So, and I do, I actually do, I forgot, I have an example for you. I got this printed out, Legends. This is just an example I put together that has different routes of, it's hard to actually put an example of what the county require because it's, it's almost impossible to do without having to have a conversation on each specific type. But you can see how if you had a half section, two turbines on the east and west side, and there's no access road in between, you would automatically not be adhering to the county regulations, just based on the simple design of what you're proposing. So I'll let you review that. I do, I do want to say we're, we welcome the wind and solar ordinance. We're very appreciative of the time that you're giving here to, and the opportunity for me to speak here, as well as the zoning board, who's, who's I kept track of discussions with as well. So we are appreciative, and we do welcome it. There's just some things that we think do need to be addressed for everyone's interest to make sure that we can develop efficiently and landowners are being heard and then the county is not being overburdened with, you know, administrative work that has come down along as it's, it could be burdensome. We do truly appreciate your willingness to reference this.
So, Glenn, missing on these collection lines. I read over this, and it states on there that this can be approved between the developer, the landowner, and it does have on there that it, that it would need the approval of.
Of me.
Of you.
Of the director.
Of the director, yeah.
And does that, does that approval entail any, any kind of application or anything like that? See you, additional, CUPs, any additional?
It's just more the knowledge, more knowledge that we have coming in.
That was, that was Mike we got from their attorney. Because we were debating exactly how it should be, and so we had a discussion with them. And that's what we came up with in terms of, you know, allowing the agreement to be made with regard to the lines, that simply have a director approve it, review it.
Okay, I, yeah, I think, I think instead of an approval, maybe a notification.
Well, that's certainly different. The idea was to have approval applied during, because the regulation says what it says, and then you have the agreement of the parties to do something different, and then you have the approval of the director.
Yeah, that makes sense. Because it is varying, it is, it is, let me formulate a try to say. It is a, an agreed upon variance to what the regulations are stating.
Exactly. Yes, the regulations would, would have a following property line or easement, you know, and not cut across like I assume that diagram shows, because I got a copy of it from the attorney. But it simply says they could agree to do that. And if they agree to do that, they simply get the approval of the director to stray from what the zoning agreement should provide.
Which is normal for any variance.
If we approach it with a. If we approach it with a will approve stance, then why do we have the regulation?
Because you're going to vary from the regulation to approve this alternative.
I know, but by, by saying that she needs to approve that, you are also implying that she has the authority to deny that.
That's correct. Which is the process that she goes through, or her office goes through anytime you vary from what the regulations say. Any variance that the regulations say, if we do something different, they're approving that variance.
Mr. Chairman, would you, would you prefer it would be may approve instead of will approve? I would prefer that our, I mean, I would prefer that our zoning population says that by agreement of the developer and the landowner, that they can put, put that across the way that they need to. And if we need to keep track of that, that we have a notification process to our director. But I am reluctant to say that we have another authority to say, of somebody in our office to be able to say, no, we can't do that.
Well, and I guess if we're going to have a discussion, we might want to have a discussion about what the zoning board considered that meeting that they were a part of. I mean, I think there's a little background here that you might want to have, not just with this particular issue, but all the issues that are being presented to you through public comment.
As in, we need to have another informational meeting in here, or what are you asking for?
We don't need any more of those.
Okay.
I guess the point is the zoning board met the 22nd of May, as, as requested by the commissioners to, to listen to everything you've heard now and everything you're probably going to hear between now and when you get to the, to the issue on the agenda. They spent three hours, we spent three hours listening to these kind of comments and concerns that were brought up by the various people who appeared at that meeting. Each one was discussed by the zoning board. And the zoning board then took action on each one of, you know, considered each one of those issues. And I think the thing that was impressive to me, I had been to the zoning board meeting for a couple of years, since Melissa took over, I haven't been to one. And you have five very engaged and diverse people on that zoning board. And they were very engaged that evening in listening to, to the various comments that were made and then making the recommendation that they made to you. And all of these things were brought up to the zoning board that I've heard thus far. And all of these things were brought up to the zoning board that I've heard thus far. And, you know, to the approval thing, originally, you know, it was a question of whether you could vary from it at all because, you know, you don't particularly want to have lines going across properties unless there's consent. So we agreed to add the part about the consent to it. But then we agreed, we talked about having the final disapproval by the zoning director so that everybody has input to that variance. That was the idea behind it. And that was presented to the zoning board, to the zoning board, voted to not modify the regulation. Hope we do not need any more information.
How would you respond, Missy, Glenn, to some of the things that Mr. Sellar brought up here about someone who's actively against these kind of developments, being able to build a facility on, say, four corners of a quarter?
Well, you want to... Okay, the fact is, is that you only got part of the definition of what a major structure is, okay? A major structure...
Page three.
The major structure is a structure that adds values to the land on which the improvement is located, and it is suitable for use and/or are used for any commercial, residential, or agricultural purpose. In other words, it's not just something you put up there. But is it suitable for use and is it being used for some commercial, residential, or agricultural purpose? So it's... And we've spent hours trying to find a better definition of major structures or minor structures. It was suggested at the zoning meeting that if it resulted in any kind of improvement that was assessed to the ground or assessed to the property, that that would be a major improvement. Well, what you just saw would be assessed to the property as was stated. So we've tried to find something that would be more definitive or more helpful, and we have been unable to. And no one has been able to provide us with a better definition of what we have here. And the zoning board also talked about, you know, the zoning board had a member who said, "I wouldn't..." He's got property right near Fillmore, so he's feeling what's going on out there. And he said, if I remember correctly, he said, "I wouldn't particularly want to have one right next to me." He didn't say I'm opposed to wind energy or wind turbines. He was not necessarily in favor of having one right next to his residence. And so when you put together these regulations, you have to obviously try to facilitate what would be a good wind project, a good solar project. But you also have to consider the interests of those who maybe don't favor it, who don't want a wind tower sitting next to their residence or within a thousand feet of their residence. So it's a balancing thing in terms of what is fair to all, not just to one particular interest. And that's what we've tried to do here because we don't have regulations right now to address it.
See, you know, I'm fundamentally a little bit the other direction there. We went through this with the wind development projects out of town and the home development down there on the southwest side of town. You know, they said, "I built my home here. I've looked across here for 20 years. This is where I want to retire and live out the rest of my days, and I want to be able to have that view shed without a wind tower." And my point is, I can appreciate your stand, but you don't own that view. You have looked across that man's property for 20 years and never paid him a thing for it, largely because it's never been worth anything. Somebody has come along now, just somebody has come along and has offered money to put something there that improves the income ability for the person that actually owns that property. And unfortunately, it puts something up in your view shed. But it's worth money. If you want to compete for that, great. But it's that person's property to be able to do that with. And I'm sorry, but that way supersedes somebody's ability to look across it.
Well, you're not talking about, "I wanted a mile from my place." We're talking about thousands of feet, you know. We're talking about the height of four of those. I don't want it any closer than the height of four of those. It's not like I want it 10 miles away. Now, in the Prairie West, that actually, I think, ended up being several miles that they'd reach.
They backed off their footprint, yes. That was by that wind development. But I felt like it was well within their rights to have it where they had it originally, that footprint. And those landowners would have been well within their rights to be able to put something up there and realize the income off of that.
And just for what he just said, I got 40 letters from that building zone that you talked about. The first thing he said was, "That guy doesn't own that G W out there just because he has that..." He doesn't own it. Is that what you said a year... That was five, six years ago, wasn't it?
But the other thing, I guess, as far as the zoning regulations go is... It's protecting, I say protecting, it should be for protecting the rights of the property owners. It's a huge, huge reason for these things. I mean, we'd have utter chaos out here with these wind farms, solar farms, so on and so forth if we didn't have this. But we've got to be god awful careful with them that we're not starting to overreach as well, and that's...
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that's the purpose of... I mean, I think the balance is what is exactly being sought here. I mean, it's not to say it's anti-wind or it's pro-wind. It's realizing we're going to have wind, and they're going to build their projects. I mean, those projects are going to be built because you can't get better wind than you can in Ford County, Kansas, in the United States. We can look at, I mean, that's been determined. So they're going to build them. The question is, and again, not being pro or anti, you know, how do you protect everyone's property rights? And the idea of this is to try to give that balance and also, you know, some sort of structure within which to build those projects. Because you're right, if you didn't have the regulations and, you know, we've struggled this... That's why we're trying to get ones that are wind-specific and solar-specific right now because we haven't had that. And we're trying to say, okay, this is how... These are our regulations for Ford County for these different types of developments. And believe me, that was discussed, I mean, you know, like Clay, he talked about his property rights in front of the zoning board. And the zoning board worked their way through whatever they worked through and made the recommendations that we need to give.
We are well over 15 minutes as far as the topic goes. And it's been pointed out to me that we do have this on an agenda item, so we will have more discussion then. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right. On open public comment, we have anybody else for open comment?
Mark.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the effort that the zoning committee has made and that all you commissioners have made. I know it's been a long process, but I think it's worth that time for talking about regulations that are going to, I mean, it's going to affect generations to come. I appreciate what Clay had to say. I mean, the math is the math. And to retard three-quarters of a section, it could possibly happen if you had an anti-wind tower person. For instance, in my personal situation, when the wind towers first came, my family had got like 27 of those things. But my father did not want wind towers on his land. Now, he didn't care if the neighbors had them right up to the section line, but he still wanted them. He said, "I don't need the money. I don't want to look at them." And I was fine with that. Now, I would have liked to have the income. It would have benefited our family, definitely. But there's a specific situation in my own, you know. And so I just want to make a quick comment about the solar. And I was out at Centennial Airport last week, and they've actually got solar panels right on the airport. And so I was asking, I asked the, you know, out there clinicians, asking for the name of the manager out there at Centennial Airport. So I gave that guy a call to ask him. I said, "Hey, how's this solar stuff working?" And he said, "Well, it's within the FAA requirements." So that's right downtown Denver in the midst of multiple billion, you know, there's billions of dollars of commercial, residential, real estate right there. And they just let the FAA regulate that. So I think these regulations, and I understand what they're trying to do, but I think they are... I mean, let the FAA decide that. Let's strike that out of there because we're more, we want to be more restrictive than what the FAA is. And I just, I don't see a reason for that. Anyway, I don't know how you fix that. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, any new topics?
I'd like to introduce Samantha Swieland. Samantha is a new attorney in our office. She's been there since May the 8th. And I just wanted to introduce her to you and all the good people of Ford County.
Samantha, nice to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you and to be here.
All right. Are we done with open public comment? Next, we have unfinished business. Business table from meeting of 2023-21. It'll be regarding Phase Two renovation for County Legacy Center.
Hello, good afternoon. I have some bids to read for you, and then we can discuss a little bit about those. We received two bids, and I'll read them in alphabetical order. First was from Building Solutions for a base bid of $3,475,199.86. And the second bid was from Torniac Construction for $3,600,000. Both are qualified bids. There was, I believe we had something about a mandatory pre-bid meeting in the scope of work document that was used for the proposals. That is up to the county to waive that in order to qualify both bids. However, we have had several discussions about this project and about funding. And so I think one of the major considerations is whether there is funding for this scope of work that these proposals were sufficient for. And I guess we can have that discussion, and I can give you a recommendation about what to do next.
I think one of my opinions on this kind of a budget, which, I mean, that would take care of the building completely, is that I just don't want to take the county into more bonded indebtedness at this point. I'd rather pay off debt and run a while without debt and then see if we can maybe justify some of this within the scope of what we currently have within our budget versus actually going out and bonding for that and actually having a project that would be fully finished tomorrow, you know, like a turnkey. I think we got a building, maybe just get it up to speed and look at some things moving forward.
I think part of the discussion, I think we had with Sonya Kent and the rest of the crew over there the other day was that we get a handle, a definition agreed upon between us and the Historical Society about what is actually the county's responsibility here and what then is the Historical Society's responsibility for all this and making sure that we're put together there. I am of the same opinion that this amount of money for this project is well outside what we have for money available to it right now and are not going to plan to bond more debt for the county at this time either.
I think even going to the budget session and listening to the department heads and everybody that we've had discussions with, I think, you know, hearing that EMS, EMT callouts are bigger, fire callouts are bigger, just our response time to the south, it'd make more sense for us to have a facility maybe in the southern location that would be dispatching maybe a fire station, EMT trucks. That would be more of a urgent care. And that, in my mind, goes to the top of the list with Sheriff's Department. We've been renting multiple storage units across the area and building a facility where he can actually not pay rent and then also have a building that he controls. And maybe as the footprint that he needs next to the jail would make a lot of sense. And I think that those things have been on kind of the wish list for several years, and we keep kicking them down the road. But with the growth of the town and the way everything's projecting, I think it makes more sense to get those things to the front. Those are projects that are dear to what we do. And I think that they kind of get into that same budget line, so we've got to figure that out.
Commissioner Snook, do you have any comments on this?
Well, I can tell you this right now, that our chief out there has loaded a place down there on that side of the deal so he doesn't have to fight that traffic coming over 113 and all the problems. If you have to be downtown and try to get out there to fight a fire or you got an accident or something like that, how in the world you can find this road tracking down here? Sometimes at 5:00, it might be two hours before you can find. I mean, what are we talking about? Our job is to take care of the people, not to take care of the Legacy Center. That's the way I feel. I mean, we already operate understaffed out there. We know that to be a fact. And we have to buy new equipment all the time out there. And I think that your voice is correct.
I feel like maybe we're off-topic here a little bit as far as Legacy Center standalone subject. The bids that we got are far enough above the money that we said we have available to try and give towards the project. And these other things, of course, are in the back of our minds. These are the things that we have to address as well. And I know that's weighing on our decisions about these kind of things. This particular avenue, I don't think is going to work for us, though.
So you do have the option to select either one of these bids or to reject them all? Those are your options.
I would make a motion that we reject these bids this time. I'll second that. I would also like to make a motion that we... I'm sorry?
You got to move.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I get a second? I'm sorry, I didn't finish that out. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I do have another drink to you.
Okay, go ahead.
I have prepared an RFQ for a construction manager at risk procurement method to continue this project. That would allow the county to coordinate with its preferred design team and with the, the construction manager that they choose out of this selection method to bring that scope of work into an agreement, into agreement with the funding that you want to provide to this project. So that you can do some work, whatever that might look like, to get this building up and running in, in a co-compliant fashion, um, while still looking to fund some of these other projects that you talked about as well.
Quick and easy is we match the scope to this amount of funding rather than trying to figure out how to match the funding to the scope.
And I believe that bringing the contractor in from the very beginning is going to allow the county to, to really have a good handle on where costs are going, what you're getting for those costs, and to fine tune that so that you can make sure you're getting what you want, but you're also spending what you want.
And then we also have the opportunity to, get those parameters clarified between the county and Fort County Historical Society as to what that, that line in between your responsibility, our responsibility is.
And I do have a draft that I think you have before you. There is a proposed timeline in there, but that draft is pending administration and, and legal review. But like I said, I do have a timeline in there. There is 15-day, a 15-day, um, period between when the RFQ is distributed and when it's due. Followed by waiting until whenever the next commission meeting would fall. And then another 15 days for that Step Two, which is regulated by a state statute. Uh, that Step Two have another 15 days. So that puts us about in the middle of July, when we'd be interviewing for that team and making this election. If we were to go ahead and move forward with that step, and see who they are.
To emphasize that this would be pending legal and admin review.
The RFQ?
Correct. We, we didn't have time to make it a proper agenda item. We didn't have this information put together until Friday. Haven't had an opportunity to sit down with legal counsel and our admin team and the data, the data. So we'd have to do that and send them out. Of course, the other option for transparency is to make this an agenda item for the next meeting, which would be? The 20th. We have to be due the 20th. And that'll give us time to have the proper legal and admin review. So we're looking at saving 15 days, basically.
Are you saying we can't get the proper review by doing a pending?
We, we can absolutely do that. I just wanted to make sure that you had the, you had the transparency and clarification.
Well, you threw the transparency thing in there now, and that's, if we're going to have a transparency problem, then we can't do that. Is that the word you actually choose?
Transparency for options, not transparency for process.
Okay. I, I want to keep the ball rolling. I want to keep the project moving forward here, so I would make a motion to submit request for qualifications, pending review of the administration and council.
And I'll second that.
Motion to second any further discussion?
I think keeping the ball rolling is an idea. I think there's definitely things we need to do to get that building up to code and open it.
I think one of our deals is to get it so it's insurable.
I didn't hear what you said.
We, we need to get it up to code so it's insurable. And we had to, we had the water damage, the flood damage there, you know, was that last winter or winter before?
All right. What about the ring? We're having on the roof right now.
Well, that's what I mean. We need to get some things rolling here in order to get that. Because right now, we pay for that out of our pocket.
Well, we got two people that made a bid on a deal, neither one of our rough people.
They have grouping subcontractors as part of the proposal?
I didn't hear what you said, ma'am.
They have grouping subcontractors as part of their proposal?
I see.
All right. Any further discussion? All those, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Close? Mr. Snuck, are you for or against? All right, Dana, thank you. Uh, we don't have legal counsel today. Anything from you, I should say?
Correct.
Somehow I bet we get to hear from you some more.
Yeah, you might.
All right, Danny Administrator for Ford. First item is for Boyd Orr to discuss the Western Kansas Career Exploration Development. Let the, the gallery clear out. Representative Orr, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for allowing me to come. This is Joe Cole from Simron. I'm the way to Orr from Fowler. Joe, we're here to talk to you about what we're attempting to do with the young folks in our, all of Western Kansas. I think we have a couple of handouts I sent.
We've done them in our package here, yes.
The first one, it says, "Western Kansas Career Exploration Development." It expresses both our goal and our mission. I think that's important. Our goal is to encourage graduates in a career that are passionate about by exploring opportunities in southwest Kansas. I think it's pretty obvious to all of us that our most precious commodity that we raise in this whole area is our high school kids, and yet we export them at a remarkable rate. And I think we need to attempt to keep those kids in southwest Kansas, the ones who are born, raised, and educated here. I think in terms of economic development, I, I know that there were about three or four things that we worked hard on at the PICA. Number one, we wanted every community to have high-speed broadband. Most communities are having it now. We had to have housing. We have a housing program now that I think is much better than we've ever had. And I think housing is slow, but it's got a potential now to get developed. And then the third thing was, was daycare. And I think many communities now, small and large, are developing daycare centers. The fourth piece now that we must do is keep our graduates at home. And that's tough. I think the urban areas have done a much better job than what we have done to, to showcase what they're doing. And so Joe Cole from Simron has developed a program, and we've got great buy-in from the schools. The school administrators have allowed kids to, to come to what Joe Cole's showcases. And we're attempting to show kids what the opportunities are in this area. And there are numerous opportunities for all kids. We've got the junior colleges involved, and it's amazing, it has amazed me, some of the opportunities that, that are outlined for kids. And I'm sure the kids doesn't have any idea before coming to our meetings that these jobs and these opportunities are available right here in their own community. We don't care if they, if they were raised and born in, in Simron, if they worked in Dodge, or if they worked in Monizuma or where. But we think they should have an opportunity at least to understand that there is opportunities for them here. And we're doing the best that we can to expose that. And we are having some limited success. Now, one of the problems we've run into is when you bring in 180 kids to a, to a simple vocation on any given day, for some reason, these kids feel like they deserve a lunch. Can you believe that? And so it costs anywhere from 10 to 15 bucks a head for that. So far, we've got donations. We've got Joe's paper out of his own pocket. And we've done numerous of these, but it's all been on voluntary basis. We think it's time we make a business out of this, and that's why we're here to approach you. And that's a little bit about the, uh, the why, and the why here, and I will let Joe take it from here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm a school guy. I've, I've been in that. I'm sure every school in this area multiple times the last 20 years, and particularly all over Kansas. Now, a lot of the kids I had in leadership when they were in school are now running businesses. So we do a lot of business training. We see in our outlining schools, declining enrollment, declining communities. So we started five years ago, just meeting and seeing what can we do to keep our graduates locally. Uh, it started out in Gray County, and then it moved over to other counties. And now it's all over western Kansas. We've had what we call showcases. You can see in the, in the, and what we do is we bring students in, and we chose four different areas. We chose the agriculture area, the tech ed vocational area, education area, and healthcare showcases. Uh, this is more than just a career day. We bring in a variety of speakers. They make connection. But we also work with kids on essential skills because business people are telling us that the three things that students lack the most when they come to go to work for a, a company is, is lack of self-starters. Another one is afraid to make mistakes, and a third one is being a, a team man, a team player. So we work with kids in those areas during that time. They build relationships. They get to know one another. Uh, they, they, we have speakers, but we also have small breakouts where they get to know. This is a growing process. We've done it for, uh, particularly the last three years since COVID, on zero employee, zero budget. We couldn't do it without Southwest Plains Regional Service Center helping us with enrollment. Uh, community colleges involved. Uh, we've had over 800 kids. We've had 26 different school districts. We've had over 30 businesses that have been part of this. When we had our showcase at the Civic Center this year, we had a lot of the new businesses, Hummer cheese to local businesses, uh, come in and, uh, it's just a, it's just a connection piece. And to carry this thing further, I had no idea when we started this five years ago, it turned into what we did. We thought it would just be a little part-time thing. Uh, myself spend a lot of time on this. Uh, we've got other people who are spending time. And then the state of Kansas Education Department says, hey, there's a state committee out here that Kansas is 46th, 47th in the nation of returning graduates. But they've been meeting for two years, three years. One of them is Fred Dirkson, the superintendent here at Dodge, is on that committee. And they said, uh, we're interested in what you're doing because you're moving. And so United School Administrators of Kansas, they're over all the superintendents, the principals, and now, now are partnering with us. Uh, they have donated, uh, $25,000 in the partnering with us. They started a 501(c)(3). Bob Kreitzer, who's with Tetrel Plumbing and Garden City, is very involved with the, the commissioners in Garden City. They found $50,000 in donation, I mean, in, uh, in what?
Grants?
Grant money that they, they pledged towards us. We're asking businesses to be on a level of pledging to us to help us go. And so we're asking you for $5,000, uh, and, and just to help us continue our process. Uh, we would present this every year and come back and let you know how it's working on a, on a yearly basis. That, uh, we believe it because it's been working. And with no money and, and no employees. And so, uh, the big one was that the USA Kansas is going to run a, a webpage for us. They're going to run a database for us. So these companies that are part of this, not only will they get to present out their showcases, get connected showcases, but they'll also be able to get their information on this one webpage so that kids, schools, parents can see what job opportunities are out there. Plus, uh, we'd, they'd be happy to help them set up work-study programs that are difficult for some of our, our people. Uh, we've had several businesses that have already been a huge part of what we do. And what we're planning on doing, uh, we don't have that showcase, uh, a date for that right now, but with Garden City Commissioners talking about that, we're going to put a showcase together for possible careers and county and city-type careers where they could come in and people from a variety of areas of county and city, and kids can see what job opportunities are there. Questions for us?
As open as I can be, I, the money is in the school districts, right? So I mean, you guys have obviously hit up the school districts, and they've given you $25,000.
No, that was United School Administrators gave us $25,000. We're not charging the schools at all.
Nothing to the school district?
Nothing. We don't charge schools at all. And we haven't charged them, uh, like I said, we bring them on, uh, donations for lunch, and everybody else has done everything for, for, for five years.
I think the big, the big thing we're going to accomplish here is the database. We're going to have a record of the kids, and we're going to have so the businesses can tap into that, and the kids can also tap into it.
With student's permission?
Yeah.
With student's permission?
If they agree to it. And that's something we simply couldn't do without a data processor and some software and a computer person. And they're going to do that for us. Not a cost, of course. We, there's no way we can hire to help them do that. But I think that's the one part of this aspect, the business angle, that we've been missing. And I think, I think that will be for both the businesses and the students alone. We've had several kids that were shadowed, different people. They, they come in and shadow someone for a day at work, and they determine that, no, this isn't what we wanted at all. And then talking to them, they, they find out and they shadow someone else, say, hey, this, this is more or less what I wanted. And it's an exploration-type thing. And, you know, sometimes lenating what we don't want to do is just as important as, as trying to figure out where that is the way we figure out what we do want to do. And then the junior colleges have just been terrific with this. And what we're finding out is that for many of these people, these young people, what they need is a certificate as opposed to a four-year degree with a $50,000 to $80,000 debt. And they can find that, and they can find a job right at home. And there, it's, it's a new, a new horizon for a lot of kids. They just didn't realize that these jobs are available to schools, so. We're pretty excited by what we've done.
It's a workforce database. That's really what it is. Is that right?
I think that'd be true, Joe.
What do you, what do you mean by that? What do you pitch, what do you pitch?
If you're one of the students that are here, and you want, you say, I am interested in construction work. All right, can we put your name on this database and list construction? Or what do you want your name under? Or do you not even want your name on this database? To give the businesses that are associated with us the opportunity to go back and contact that person, that high school student.
We haven't done that yet.
We haven't done that.
This is a work in progress.
It's a work in progress.
We're taking it a step at a time. We've just, basically, right now, it's been, we contact counselors. We let them know about when the showcases are. They bring interested kids. I contact businesses in that specific area, like on our vocational, we have anything for NJE and Monizuma to, uh, whoever. Uh, they share a little bit about their organization. We put them into small groups. They can be able to get to talk with each of those businesses, build relationships. And that's what we've done so far with this. The USA partnership is going to give us the website and the database. And they've been in the school business a long time. They're not going to do anything that would infringe upon privacy of student information. But they would also be able to put their logo, the businesses on there where it's, parents and schools can, or parents and students can get on their website of that particular business that they're interested in more. Many old healthcare that are used. Uh, many old health care that are a huge part of it, they've already had some students that have come back and said, hey, we want a job shadow here, we wanna see what's going on, we wanna do this, we wanna get our, uh, and, uh, we're meeting with just lots and lots of businesses. But it's a relationship thing. Everything we do is about relationships. And, uh, we're just trying to build relationships for our kids up there.
So currently, we have a program that we partner with businesses, where if kids come back to the area?
Right.
Then they get a write-off to their college education, which is a retention piece that we've presented forward. I think other counties probably do this as well. Yours seems like it's truly just a database. I mean, that you would be putting businesses in line, this is the type of projects that this kid could go into if he wants. Let's say it's a, I don't, I don't know if you're gonna be first responders, which is what we would be looking at, um, or road bridge. But if you, let's say it's just mechanical, you go out, you go out to the site, you say, hey, I went to a tech college, and I'm just looking for technical degrees. Toyota would be on there, Chevy would be on there, maybe Ford County would be on there. Where would we be looking for a mechanical-minded student? So, did you?
You're talking about something we haven't done. What we've done is we've met in person. They've developed relationships with these business people.
Okay.
They've crossed and, and said, hey, here's our contact information to come at MJE and come out and look at our organization. It's a relationship. If a student wants to give their name, the database is something that we put out there that we're looking at. No, this is not a database, this is a relationship thing. But we also teach them essential skills, skills to be successful. Uh, you may say a one-time shop, but we've been doing it a long time.
Sure.
And, uh, uh, the kids retain, but it's a relationship piece that doesn't have the database. And yes, we've had people, but when you're talking about the, it's a John Deere program, where kids will go to work for John Deere, they'll pay for their schooling, come back and work for them for so long. We've got businesses, the other businesses are wanting to do that concept, and we're gonna help them set up that. We've already, we're, for instance, MJE wanted diesel mechanics. Well, one of the schools said, we got this young person that's interested in being a diesel mechanic, so they got together, they formed a partnership. They're gonna go out, get their certificate, come back and go to work for them. Davis Electrics doesn't have a lot. Now, this is not, the, the database hasn't even developed, this is a relationship thing.
Okay. Do you guys, do you guys have a business plan?
Yeah.
Is that something we can be presented? Cause I, I wanna know what the money's for.
Okay.
Like, I wanna know why, why?
Very much.
Get the, uh.
It's primarily for lunch.
Yeah.
And that, and a computer program, and then some miscellaneous expenses that we have, and we've gotta develop, but it's, it's a, it's a
We have a lot.
Working harvest, we provide us.
Well, if you meet with the superintendent of schools, I mean, he's gonna tell you that he's taking kids around to all of these area businesses. They're mainly in Ford County, they're not MJE down in Monazuma. But they're mainly area schools, or businesses that he gets, you know, school buses from, and, and takes kids out there. They do day at the business, whether it's Crustbuster or something like that. To where these kids get a chance to actually see the machines at play, meet the people that actually work with them, meet the engineers that are in the businesses. I mean, that's, that's happening here, so I don't know. We're trying to figure out what your value add is to that.
Well, I think, I think the, the economic development already has programs that
They do.
Do something similar about moving students to professions. I think that would be a great place to start too, with economic development.
Maybe that's where we should be instead of here.
Yeah.
I won't disagree with them.
We can have what the
Oh, did you?
We talk with them about what we're doing.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's definitely an organization that would give a lot of financial support to, are ready. I mean.
I understand you do.
Yeah.
You guys are coming.
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Have a good day.
Item number two is for finding zoning director. County councillor, Glenn Curd.
In the head before you, resolution number twenty-three dash sixteen. This resolution is asking for approval for moving to Ford County zoning regulations for the incorporated areas of Ford County. The zoning board held a three-hour meeting allowing all concerns to be brought forth and took time to consider each of the common sense concerns. What I'm presenting you today is what the zoning board has come up with that we agreed as serves Ford County. Most of the zoning changes are minor, changing the wording of penny commission to zoning board, adding a definition for the term floor area for correcting this word words. In article nineteen dash one oh four of the zoning regulation, we updated the time restriction for additional uses. The match shows that the development plan of one year did then request up to two one-year extensions if approved by the board of county commissioners. In article twenty-six one oh two of the zoning regulations, we amended some wording for a clearer meaning, but kept the same intent concerning fourteen-day protest period after a zoning hearing. In article twenty-six dash one oh four, we amended the sign regulations so sign can be easier to read and understand from a new vehicle. We added article twenty-nine for regulations to address wind farms and article thirty for regulations to address solar farm. On May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, the Ford County zoning board voted for in favor and zero against to recommend for approval of the amendments to the Ford County zoning regulations with recommended changes to both articles twenty-nine and articles thirty. That's the end of my report.
I would like to, what, to run it before, uh, the FAA ruling. We are, the FAA ruling is, they do it per airport, a non-hazard test. And I looked up some articles in Lawrence, KU did research on this. And they used advanced computational aerodynamics modeling, the KU research team studied the effect of winds from ten to forty miles per hour. They found the higher the wind speed, the greater turbulence, which stretches the cars nearly three miles from the single turbine, wind turbine. It also stated in their study that the FAA reviews potential hazard of the physical height and location of the structure, but not any of the emissions from that structure. This was from Tiffany Brown, she's the state aviation engineer with KDOT's Aviation. And this research points out a shortcoming in the current evaluation process, and that's why, uh, KU did this study. They found no research that lifted, that looked at the impact of wind generated by wind farms for general aviation. But KDOT tells us, they begin complaints from pilots about unexpected turbulence as they approach airports near wind farms. So they felt the study was worthwhile, and especially with the boom in wind farms and wind farm possibilities in Kansas. They stated that the road hazard analysis showed for the Rooks County Regional Airport, the potential road hazard index is as high range as far out is two point eight four miles. For the Pratt Regional Airport, the road hazard index is a high range as far as one point one four miles. These numbers are based on a gust wind of forty miles per hour, that's below the turbine brake wind speed of fifty-five miles per hour. Another report that I read stated at the very end, summary conclusion, the explosion of wind turbines development across the United States does not bode well for the continued viability of many public airports. The operators of those airports are going to have to appreciate the legal and regulatory my, me, my loose, my loose, which they find themselves and grant her the resources to combat the proliferation of wind turbine generators in and around their airports. Otherwise, their airports may face extinction. Cause they were saying the smaller the airplanes, the more they're going to be affected by this. So that's why we have two mile protocols. At one point one eight, two point eight four, that's why we went to the two mile. We're just trying to protect our, our report and people on it.
And that's on page five? Yes.
Yes. Knowing that, finding out that the FAA doesn't, in, as of recently, they don't count in the wind turbulence and stuff, they just count in structure. That's a lack, you know, we wanna hold ourselves better than that. We want to protect our people.
And there's a difference between the wind tower versus a solar farm?
Yes, there is.
One other thing on the distances, uh, Melissa and I didn't just come up with those. Those were initially proposed to us, we, we were working with Perk and Michael and some other counties in terms of trying to develop specific wind and solar energy policies. And that was the consensus of, of what we received, and we have not changed those, what, what that consensus was.
Glenn, earlier, we were talking about, I know Stephen brought up solar pumps as defined by commercial. You're saying that does not count towards?
No, there's
Is this, cause it's personal use?
Yeah, it is, it, it, it's stated in our regulations for, uh, systems.
The definitions.
There's definitions in there. And that's just a, a system that consists of one or more, at least any ground-mounted or building mounted solar array or modules for solar-related equipment. None of the, just the CSES, none of those regulations occur to that.
Okay.
It's only for the facilities and the conversion systems for retail.
More of an array field?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it would not feel right having anybody go do a conditionally use just to put solar panels on their house.
Is, is there more than one airport we're trying to think of in Ford County? Is there?
Well, we have our definitions for private and public, and we only have one public.
Right, in Ford County?
In Ford County.
And there's private?
There is, there are several private little ones.
Strips.
Strips that are about
Grass landing.
And they have the right to, the privates have the right to, to vote. We did not make it where the public voted because we're trying to protect the public.
Right.
Which is our job.
It's public.
Is it public?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have that, okay, sorry.
Unless those people, I'm pretty sure it's public because there's all sorts of overlying planes that land there on the weekends and stuff. Now, and then, and then there's two or three different.
Does it have to be public for other aircraft to use it? Or, I mean, if, if a guy's got a private strip, can, can other people use it? I don't know anything about.
I don't know, I know there's three different commercial spray companies that fly off of it.
Right.
And there's a, there's a transmission line fifteen hundred feet from it, they actually have to go underneath it before they can get in the air.
Yep, I know that, that big line that comes from
They stay about fifty feet off the ground, and then they get under it, and then they go up.
So they just stop there to refuel?
They get their chemical loads there.
Yeah, they load there. Okay.
Clay, Larry Randall owns it?
Yes, Larry Randall.
He owns it?
I, I can't answer that.
That's super exciting.
It's wild to watch, though.
It's wild to watch them crop desk, I mean, they do go underneath.
They're not scared.
High loss electricity as they wrap their fire around them once, electric kind of house.
Yeah. I was out, one of the prop bag out at Monazuma, and when I was out there the first time, there was a guy that was flying a helicopter, went down over by Syracuse. Hit, hit some lines, just took them right over. Wild. Yeah.
I, I don't wanna interject, I'm, I'm looking up the FFA information for the Buffalo Airport, and it says it's open to the public, but that it's privately owned, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was
Yeah. Take from that what you will.
Man, Glenn Keifer, fruit, okay, man?
Yeah.
Look at this, on the floor.
How about that?
I can Google with
Are you hired?
No.
Well, maybe.
So when the group's talking about the inclusion of the FF, FAA regulations, they're trying to say they're trying to get tighter?
They're one
Smaller scope of
Smaller scope. They're one that's, they want us to uphold just by the FFA, FAA regulations. And I've read at least three different reports that says it's really not a good thing to do right now. Because FAA, FAA regulations don't take in everything that should take in any because, and has caused problems for the smaller airports.
For turbulence.
For turbulence.
They will have to comply with FAA.
Yeah, they have to, no, no matter what they do, they have to comply.
If you look at Rooks County, the FAA requirements would be greater than what they're proposing in these zoning regulations.
Okay.
And it may, it may be for Ford County, I don't know.
What is the difference between the FF, FAA regulations and what we have in our zoning regulations now? What?
Well, we don't have any regulations now.
We don't have it.
Regulations with anything, the only thing that we have is per radio. Literally not high
We haven't had anything regarding airports and any of the wind farms so far.
We have airport overlays, yes, we do have that, buildings so, you know, can be so far or so close to our airport, we did have that, that's a whole subject, but I, I can't clear it, Sean?
And, and I believe that in the projects that are in place now, we have referred to FAA compliance. Uh, I, I haven't went to each of those recently, but I believe that there's reference to that in the condition we use for that. But the regulations themselves do not have this distance.
Is there anything you would change in the wording of the definition for major structures or minor structures? I know we've talked about that briefly over there, but
And, and I'm not laughing at the question, I, I
You wrestled it.
We really have, and we've wrestled with it from, you know, we've asked other attorneys who, you know, have said, can we do this differently? And just said, tell us, tell us what you propose. And we haven't been able to come up with something better. It's a really difficult, uh, you know, it, it's not a beauty, it's an eye-of-the-holder quite thing, but it, it, you have to set some standard. So the idea that we had was, is that, you know, it was something that was not in use, or not, you know, for commercial or agricultural use. And, and that's not as far as we've been able to do.
Is there anything that would be like a height requirement of a building, or maybe a
We only have a height requirement on our
For major?
For, for any
Any structure.
For any structure.
Okay. Cause I was thinking if somebody went and bought like the portable shed and dropped it out there, that doesn't, that's a minor structure?
Well, unfortunately, there's always gonna be somebody else that's gonna try to wiggle around and do what they want to do in a way. And we have to throw some, you know.
Right.
We would be here all day if we had to cover what everybody could do.
Plus, we, plus we have, we have the idea that if you're gonna put something up, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to go through the zoning office, or you're legally are to go through the zoning office anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it's, it's not gonna just, there's, you know, portable.
Yeah, somebody put up a five-by-five shed, I'm not gonna consider them major and say it has to be, no.
But if it's carport, it's probably not a big deal, but if it's a two-car garage, it is.
It could be, depending on what you have in that garage.
Yeah. I mean, what's your intended use of it?
Yeah, what I'm saying, a two-car garage is more of a permanent structure versus a carport. Temporary. And I was thinking a major structure, giving you like a shed, like a machine shed.
Yeah, machine shed, something that
Grain bins, something.
Yeah, at first they were wanting to, they asked us to could make it instead of a major or minor, to call it an dwelling unit. But I ran up to them, then I know farmers have spent more on their barns than they ever did on their house.
Yeah. My point a little while ago, Glenn, in, in that we introduced zoning regulations, and whenever you, whenever we do that, I mean, we really have that supposedly in place, excuse me, to protect the property owner and protect his, his rights. And, and the overarching
and, and the overarching purpose, I guess, of our zoning regulations to protect and, and preserve the agricultural aspects of our county. But the fact is, is if, if zoning regulations are put into place, which they already are, they're, they're here, I get that. For that, they are also, they're being manipulated by folks that have nefarious. And it's, that's why it's zoning, that's why zoning regulations are so damn contentious for people is, is because we, we understand that. And by the way, if anybody ever starts talking about having an, an overlaying or, or a joint type of zoning deal between your city and, and county or the, don't do it. For God's sakes, don't let them do it. It's, it's terrible outcome. I, I think you're experiencing this out in Colorado where they've done that kind of thing, and it's, it's, it's an awful thing to have happen.
We're getting back to back second seat.
And.
Trinity Bill's going through my mind.
But I'm, I'm still sitting here going, and I, and I, I just, I have to have more confidence than I have right now in, in what I'm looking at than, than saying I'm okay with this yet. I don't, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm kind of speaking out of turn here. We don't really have a motion on the table there to discuss it in that manner, I guess.
I think from our standpoint, I don't want to speak for Melissa, but the zoning board's taken two rounds of this. The last round they took, three.
Three.
And the last one they took was pretty significant, deep dive with these. And so I think you got the recommendation of the zoning board, and I don't think that would change no matter how many times we went back there.
And let me, let me, let me say, Glenn, that I'm not necessarily saying it needs to go back.
Right.
Right.
I'm saying Commissioner Tassit needs a little more time to think about this.
Right. And, and we need direction, and if the board is going to do something different from what is recommended to you, we need some direction about what that should be.
Right, right.
So Glenn, we've had zoning take three shots at this, right? And you've been at the last of those meetings or maybe?
Just the last one.
Okay, so, and walking through the thought process of everybody putting their input in from major corporations to landowners, you now have a feeling that this is what you want to recommend to us?
Right.
Okay. And we've talked about major structures, minor structures, heights. I mean, you've kind of covered that basis. Regulations is whether it's FAA or not. I mean, we feel like we've got a good consensus of something to start and walk down the road with. This gives a structure. I know that in the past, it's always been, just looking at radio powers. I mean, that's it. And that's always been interesting to have a wind farm come in and we start the negotiations, and they read that, and they're just, they come back with more questions. Because they're not used to seeing what we have from the seventies. So your recommendation is to accept this and move forward with this recommendation?
That's the zoning board's recommendation to you, and that's Melissa's recommendation. And I am totally comfortable with that, having to sit in the process.
Okay.
And, and believe me, and that doesn't mean there's not a better way or a different way. Obviously, that's your decision to make. But we've, we've knocked this around until probably our ball's out of air in terms of, you know, other ideas about what we want to do. Got a first name?
That's a very first name.
You know, talking about discretion with you, prior to getting these in place, there really was a lot of discretion. Basically, what you were doing is you were formulating a conditional use permit, and you were inserting within that conditional use permit what, what conditions you were going to require. I think here we have a much more, this is what required structure, which I think ultimately, when it gets to wherever it needs to be, is going to be good.
And I actually did have two developers say that what we have is very good, actually.
And, and I, I get that too, but I think that almost might be the scope of maybe the land that they've got locked up. To where in their mind, they're like, hey, that fits our puzzle piece perfectly. You know, like, don't change it. But somebody else's, that's probably what we're hearing, is maybe somebody else's is like, well, that cuts us completely out. Our family doesn't get anything. You know, or, or maybe it's a developer that goes, well, that kind of shoots out this whole family, you know, where I can't use them. I'll have to move on to option B or C.
Interesting, there was a gentleman from Lake Nebraska who was at the zoning board meeting and came up and spoke, and really didn't have, I don't think he had anything in the mix. I'm not, and I'm not really quite sure, you know, somebody, but anyway, he was, he was complimentary in Ford County in regular and making a separate, typically, five regulations. So one of these gentlemen, because I didn't, I didn't know it before.
And there's, is there a rush to move this forward? Is there projects waiting in the wings to get started?
We've had that same project since two thousand sixteen.
Well, you've heard about the potential solar.
For the big church.
Yeah, there's a.
But nobody's made an application.
No one has made an application as well.
Because I was thinking full dodge. There's a representation later this month from that.
Here.
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a whole presentation ahead. You got a little business card on it. In light.
Yeah. Not really groundbreaking.
Right, no.
They have not approached our county at all.
Yeah.
But it's, it obviously is.
We've seen that from wind farms too, I think, I guess you'd call it.
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we table this one more time until the next meeting, that'd be the June twentieth meeting. I would like, I would like the time to deep dive on this more for my own, for my own understanding.
Sure.
And, and use that opportunity to visit with you guys some more on any questions that I have about this as well. I make a motion that we table to the June twentieth.
I'll second that. And Glenn, if you probably can get some time pencil in, I'd like to probably go over with whatever thoughts converge.
Any further discussion? Hold on, is it a favor of tabling to June twentieth?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, thank you, Glenn. So we're just up here wrestling with all the bugs?
Some of the old pieces, uh, and it should be.
Yes.
My gentleman, it should be.
They're good.
Okay.
At least if I could get one shot to really get it right.
That's it.
Speaking of one shot, get it right.
It's like no break.
Not too much.
It is.
Well, Glenn, we have to think Elliot's presentation will be the super simple.
Always have to try and figure out all the square.
He's going to play. Yeah, this is our yearly, I'm very old for code red services.
It is a budget in this kind of journey. There is nothing that's.
Mr. Chairman, I think a motion that we approve renewing annual contract from Monsol LLC on our corporate package.
I second. Motion seconded, any further discussion? Hold on, a little favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Elliot.
Thanks, Salya.
Let's wrestle.
I think this is your. Well, the next item will be for administration to report out to you guys. We don't have any representatives from the registered deeds office today.
Table it.
That's right. Rick is out, Rick is out of the office, so basically, this is the annual, actually, days of help and purchase through the registered deeds office. They will purchase a certain amount, and in this case, it will be three hundred, where they are requesting to purchase three hundred. At a price of three dollars per pin. And they will sell them back to county employees at that same rate as a dollar discount. And county employees. Dot City's day, Dot City Days is July twenty-seventh through August sixth. They also want us to let you know that they have been doing this since two thousand and three.
Twenty years. We make a motion to approve the Ford County Registered Deeds purchasing of the three-dollar pins.
I'll second that. Have you seen the families?
I haven't seen them.
They, they, they did a little, I guess it's more of a page fight than that.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're a Colts fan or something like that, and you're pretty excited. Pretty Colts.
All right, with motion seconded, hold on a favor.
Aye.
Aye. The upcoming meetings, we have the next regular Ford County Commissioners meeting that will be June twentieth, Tuesday holiday, at the regular time here. This changes, we have the C five community facilities advisory board. That'll be Wednesday, June twenty-first, at six thirty P.M. Is that going to be, is that still going to be at, Amy, do you know if that's still going to be at the old city hall?
Um, as far as I know, yes.
Yeah, it'll still be at the same locations. I know many of the city offices have moved out to their other building, but this C five, we still will be willing to have it. We have the twenty twenty-three NACO Annual Conference that'll be in Austin, Texas, July twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. Of course, we have Dot City Days, July twenty-seventh through August sixth. And I believe you have the Ford County Engineers Report attached to your presentation pack. And that's all I have for that, Mr. Chairman.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So move.
Hold on a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.